I want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for August 12th, 2024. At this time, I'm going to ask the county commissioner Trey Gooch lead us in our prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh Father, we thank you for this and another day, and we thank you, Father, that we live in a country where it is a people's representatives that we're meeting a forum like this. And so we ask that the things that we do and say here and later in our day and our life will be in accordance with our will. Father, we ask you to bless the people of Rutherford County, our leadership here, give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need to live a life that's acceptable to you. Father, we ask that you also bless the leadership in Nashville and Washington, that you would guide them and that they may somehow look above and see you when they're making decisions that affects all of our lives. Father, we love our people who serve us overseas, and we ask you to bring them home safely in a appointed time. And Father, we love your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins, that we may have life everlasting, and it's through his name we pray. Amen.
Madam Secretary, do you have our roll call for termination of quorum?
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We'll now go to the approval of our minutes for July 8th and 22nd of 2024. I'll go to my vice chairman, Lee Bogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes for the July 8th meeting and July 22nd meeting. They are correct and in good order, therefore I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, they have been approved. Public comment period. Mr. Demossi, did we have anyone?
No, sir. No one signed up for that.
No one signed up for public comments, so we'll move into items withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Your agenda has been updated, so you don't see this on there, but the original agenda we sent out a week or two ago for application REZ 24-020, that was along 41A North, Highway 41A North near Eguival. That was removed from the agenda by the applicant about a week, week and a half ago. I don't think there's anybody in the crowd that may be here for that if they are. We tried to get the word out as best we could, but that will not be on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll move then right into our new business, and that deals with item A, rezoning and zoning ordinance amendment request. Just a reminder that all rezoning and regulation amendment requests will be considered at the September 12th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the planning commission or the applicant. We have one item, which amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding flag lot regulations, ORD 24003, and that is presented by the planning staff, they are the applicants. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you, and hope everybody's doing well tonight. The planning commission has held two work sessions this year to explore potential changes to the county's regulation on flag lots. Our current regulations, our ordinance does define them, but beyond prescribing a minimum distance of the flag pole, which is the skinny portion that goes from the road to where it opens up, there are no other regulations. The work sessions have identified some development patterns used for flag lots that can create undesirable situations, such as multiple lots of flag poles, stacking of the flag stems, et cetera. So we, last work session, we did present to you some draft amendments for your review. After looking those over, we were instructed to go ahead and put this on the agenda for tonight for our public hearing on this. I can go into as much or as little detail with this as you like, but I will just kind of give you just a quick overview of what we're looking at here. Some of the major changes that we're looking at is flag lots have to be at least an acre in size, not counting the flag pole itself. Right now, the way the regulations read, you'd count the entire area of the lot, the flag area where it opens up in the back, as well as the pole or stem, whatever you want to call it. Most of the regulations we looked at when we were preparing these amendments didn't allow for someone to count the stem, so they're looking at just the lot itself. So we are saying at least an acre in size for that. Only one flag lot per flag pole, no more than two flag lots abutting or flag poles abutting each other. And we also added some provisions in there for the county's fire marshal's office to look at that, any new flag lots that were coming in. Something else that we changed in regard to fire protection is the fire hydrant distance where it's currently measured to the closest part of the property, which is typically the flag pole. We would measure the distance from a fire hydrant to the actual flag portion in the back where it opens up, not to the pole itself. We have received some phone calls about this. I know there's several people in the audience that want to speak to this, and you know, we encourage them to do that. But just a few things, just to respond to some of the comments that we've received on this. First of all, I want to make sure it's clear to everybody that we're not looking to eliminate flag lots. We have received some comments to that effect, that they think the county is eliminating flag lots. That is simply not the case. What we're doing is looking to provide maybe a more predictable outcome for flag lot development, especially when we look at some developments that we've seen that have five, six flag poles, and it just, it can become problematic. And that's some of the things that we talked about during our work sessions. The concern isn't so much with the flag lots in and of themselves, but what happens to these large acreage tracts that are divided after their split. So what we've seen in some situations, and we looked at some examples, one in particular along Midland Road, where the lots themselves were divided off into, say, five, 10 acre tracts, which that in and of itself, we really don't get a chance to review, just because of the, anything less than or greater than five acres, I should say, doesn't count as a subdivision, so that doesn't come to us for any kind of a review. But what ends up happening is these tracks end up getting subdivided further, which that starts leading to some of the issues that we've been discussing. So, and everything that we're talking about here, and everything that you see in these regulations, there's nothing in this that we haven't seen in other jurisdictions. We didn't make up any of this just to fit what we were looking at. There's nothing unique in what we're proposing. So I've put a couple of attachments, if you will, on your tables, a couple of, one email from one of the local auctioneers that I thought would be interested. We got that email this morning. I also placed on your tables the chart that I prepared, or our staff prepared during one of our work sessions, just kind of giving you an overview of some of the regulations we looked at when we were looking at making these changes to flag lots. So I will say that as of right now, and we've got some examples here, I'll open it up for questions here in just a moment, but we've got some examples here as well, some victorial examples of what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed. We can go through some of those. That's not on your iPads, but it is on, we'll have them on the big screens for you. But we're here to get comments, of course. We're not in just a huge hurry to approve anything tonight. There is, of course, this has to be, have a public hearing tonight. If this is approved, regardless, it would have to go to the board of commissioners for another public hearing, since this is a zoning ordinance amendment, doesn't stop here. So we're just a recommending body in that regard for tonight. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Yes, possibly. We've done a lot of this through the work sessions, so if you're ready, we'll begin the public comment time. Let me remind those that wish to speak, we'll do this as orderly as we can. You'll just take time about who would like to go first, and then we'll just follow after that, after individual quits speaking. We'll do this for three minutes. We'll give you three minutes to speak, make your comments, your suggestions, what you want to do. There will not be answering of questions that you might bring up, but we'll just basically have your comments and what you think and go that direction. At the end of three minutes, the red light will come on there for your time to be up and go through there. So, and I think we have representative for an organization here tonight. We're going to give them just a little bit more extra time to make their statement, too. So we'll begin. I'll open the public comment period at this time, and we'll ask that someone come forward who would like to make a statement or come forward. Chris, and I believe, Chris has already made a contact to us. He's representing the Home Builders Association, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and he'll have five minutes instead of three.
Yep. So my name's Chris Jensen. I'm here tonight representing the Home Builders Association of Central Tennessee. I've kind of tried to keep my comments to specifically what has been put on the agenda and how it reads. But as I've followed this discussion of the course, these two work sessions, we feel like that, especially the way that the agenda reads here, that this process feels rushed, implication of the proposal presented, we don't believe have been thoroughly examined. And at this stage, as the agenda said, there's still ongoing changes that haven't been presented to comment on. We feel like there should be a more comprehensive review of what we're looking at and consideration of the potential, the full potential impacts. We would propose that the specific issue with the current regulations be clearly identified, laid out, and then that communicated to stakeholders in Rutherford County, rather than just asking for limited comments on what has already been proposed. We feel like we should all be seeking input on how to best address the concerns of this commission and a collaborative approach that actively involves all stakeholders would lead to a more thoughtful and effective solution. Working together, we can achieve regulations and support both strategic planning and home affordability. One of our concerns is how this reads. It calls out, in our opinion, appears to diverge from what we've heard during the work sessions. Specifically, this draft suggests that a flag pole lot can access only one lot, with the exception of an access drive connecting to a fronting lot that this states already has public street frontage. During the work sessions, it was discussed for the possibility of allowing additional lots to be accessed through the flag poles. Our understanding was that two adjacent flag poles could be provided to access a total of five, or even some discussion around eight lots, which we feel would allow for greater flexibility and development while still adhering to the principles of good planning. As the regulations are current shown, that's not what we see when reviewing them and presented for consideration tonight. Another concern I want to address is the ongoing debate about fire hydrant requirements. It's been well established that smoke detectors are crucial for saving lives where residential fires are concerned, and the rigorous building codes we enforce ensure that every new home, as well as those undergoing renovations or additions, means we're updating them, meet these safety requirements. And over the years, that technology gets better and supports better and provides more safety. The discussion we had here a year and a half ago regarding increased fire hydrant requirements was focused on densely populated neighborhoods where houses are built close together, and property damage was more likely to extend beyond the individual home. However, what's been presented tonight concerns parcels of land that are at least one acre in size, where the same property fire safety concerns do not apply in the same way. We believe that current fire hydrant requirements are sufficient for ensuring proper property safety and align with also what insurance companies consider when assessing risk. Even further, I've been informed that some large insurance companies now place minimal, if any, emphasis on fire hydrant locations when determining premiums. Introducing these stricter fire hydrant requirements or even imposing a thousand-foot limit on the distance from the road to structures on these larger parcels seems unnecessary. Such changes would place an additional burden on property owners. Additionally, this proposal appears to contradict the broader desire expressed throughout the overall process to have larger lots or parcels versus densely populated neighborhoods. We also do not believe that it is proper planning to have a requirement for the fire marshal's office to sign off or govern access to a property. We feel like what was discussed in the work sessions was specific requirements to be set and governed by the planning department, but to be overseen by an engineer. But as that's not presented on here, I won't comment on that further. In conclusion, we urge the commission to take a step back, give these proposals a thorough review and consideration that they deserve by involving stakeholders more directly and considering the full impact of these changes. Thank you for your attention and on this matter.
Thank you, sir. If not, I'll close the public comment period at this time. Commissioners? Other discussion, comments, motion, or where we go from here?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions, I guess. Doug, in your agenda package that you sent out notice of this meeting, says staff is in the process of fine tuning these amendments, and we'll have additional comments at the planning commission meeting. Anything been changed in your proposal as opposed to what we got earlier? So I know if there's something that we need to...
Yes, no, I don't believe there has been, and I understand where Mr. Jensen was talking about it. Yeah, I sometimes put that in there as kind of a catch-all thing in the event. I do make some tweaks between when the agenda goes out and when the public hearing is had, but what you have here in the agenda, we didn't change from when the agenda first went out. But of course, there's no way he could have known that. But yeah, the answer is your question and Chris's as well. Now, what you have here is the same thing we had sent out.
Good, that should make it a little bit easier trying to, for all of this to soak in. So there can only be one flag lot per flag pole, and if you have a large enough track, say it's fifty acres, can you not, that prohibits you to subdivide that into two lots, accessing that, one of them via an easement, or is that what you're saying? Just...
Yeah, I'm going to pull this up here. Our staff looked at some of these, and all the different colors don't necessarily represent anything other than the fact that they're separate lots. Okay, so just don't get hung up on the fact that one's blue, light blue, dark blue, green, whatever. What we're looking at, and there's several slides here that we'll go through, and some of the things that Mr. Jensen was talking about regarded the private easements, which right now we're just talking about flag lots. They do interconnect to a certain extent, but this at least gives us an idea of how the flag lots would work. What you can see, I guess, as you're looking at this on the left, no more than two flag lots, flag pole shall abut each other. And you can see those two examples there. You've got on the top, you've got two flag lots, kind of with the poles next to each other. Then you've got another flag lot right next to it in that area. Depending on how you want to word that section, because that's basically, that is number four under general conditions, no more than two flag lots, flag pole shall abut each other. If it's just flag poles, then, you know, the top one there may be okay. If it's the flag lot and flag poles, yeah, that's one of the things I did want to talk about today. And the one on the bottom is a little more obvious there. You've got three flag poles right next to each other. Now, on the other side, what you're seeing is a couple of different examples. You could have one flag lot, a lot accessing the flag. Of course, that darker blue portion is just a separate lot entirely. Might go to the next slide if you don't mind. So the following example of what could be permitted under the proposed regulation, this is talking about, I think, kind of what you're getting at, Jim. You know, like if you're starting on the far left with that dark blue, you've got, that's just a, excuse me, a regular lot. Then you've got two flag lots next to each other. You have a larger property, which is not just a standard lot, then a light blue standard lot, two more flags next to each other, and then another light blue regular parcel. So that's an example that could be permitted. Go to the next one. So this gives you an idea as well. The lot with 100 foot of road frontage is not considered a flag lot because it meets the lot with requirements of the zoning district. So let's just say for the sake of argument that the property is zoned within the RL district, that's a minimum of 100 foot. You could build somewhere in that 100 foot stem. That's not really a stem, but the other two are just the 50 foot all the way to the back. So that is something that would be allowed. The next slide shows what the setbacks would look like for something like that. Now, obviously, these aren't to scale, so just understand that. But you can see for the flag lot, the orange property that you're looking at there, there's no setbacks, and for that first green one, there's no setbacks in that flag pole area. You know, everything's in the back, so that just kind of gives you an idea of what that would look like. Go ahead and do the next one. And this is another one that would be an example of what could be permitted under proposed regulations. Again, you've got two flags, they're not abutting, those two are abutting each other, but then you have a larger parcel or two, then a couple more flags. So based on the way that these are written, you know, we try to come up with some examples here just to give you an idea of what may be permitted if this is going to be passed the way that it is. Right now, you could just have flag, 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 flag all the way across. And one of the changes you remember that we made was instead of having 50 foot at the road and then tapering it down to 25, we said make it 25, or I'm sorry, make it 50 all the way up. And we talked about the reason for that being, especially things like utility easements, electrical especially, that requires a 40 foot easement and those kind of things. So it just made more sense, rather than tapering it down, just make it 50 all the way back. Did that kind of answer your question, Jim, a little bit?
Well, it got me a little closer. I'm thinking, so what if I was to purchase one of those green tracts there, and it's 20 acres, or pick a number? And my parents can't take care of themselves anymore, and I need a little house next door, whether it's three acres, or five acres, or one acre, or whatever. Can I not subdivide part of that and build a small, or build anything for them on one of those tracts? I've only got a 50 foot, 50 foot flag stem there, so you're telling me, even if I had 100 acres, can't do anything additional on that property?
Well, I mean, in your situation, you could always do an accessory dwelling unit, but if you're actually wanting to split something off, if you've got a flag lot, you know, the way that we're looking at the regulations, no more than, let me see, one flag lot per flag pole. Further resubdivision to create additional lots off a flag pole shall not be allowed. So that's what we'd be looking at, so...
I'm thinking about all these large tracts of land that we have around, and we're not building any more roads. And sometimes it's a long distance between them, and we got to get, you know, wondering if we're making enough accommodation for that sort of thing, or even if you, person had 20 or 50 acres in 30, 40 years from now, and just no place feasible left because there's no more roads, road frontage, I mean...
Well, and we understand, you know, obviously, there are some lots out there to have limited road frontage. In this situation, obviously, the one that's on the screen right now, this person's got a ton of frontage on here, but there are those that have that issue, you know? And we talked about that a little bit during our work sessions, if you recall, you know, what do you do for the situations that you're discussing, where maybe you have 50 foot and you want to subdivide off a certain portion for, you know, your mom, your dad, grandma, grandma, whatever, you know? Because we get, we do get those occasionally. But I think what really drove this to begin with was looking at those situations where somebody splits off 15 acres, and then they're bringing it back, and they're trying to get three, four lots out of it, private easements, flag lots, and is it the most efficient use of the land? That's where we started having some concerns about that.
Couple of other things I was looking at. So fire hydrant requirements, wouldn't, you're saying even on a five acre lot, or these were, these are one acre minimums? You're saying we're going to, we're going to need fire sprinkler systems and fire hydrants for houses even when on an acre, but we don't even require that in a subdivision?
I think what we need, we probably had to have some, and I agree, we probably need to have some more discussion on that. Looking at a couple of these under emergency and fire protection, they may contradict each other just a little bit. Staff's intent when we put this together was we didn't want to get in a situation where we were saying that, like number three, I know, fire hydrant placement shall be in accordance with the regulations for Rutherford County SubRigs. Nothing shall be construed as requiring a fire hydrant for properties greater than five acres in size, because we don't require that now. Now, if you look at, you know, number two in there, after looking at that in a little more detail, I mean, that might kind of, those might conflict a little bit. I think a little clarification in that would probably be helpful for everybody. Fire Marshal Sanders, I don't think, yeah, he texted a little bit ago and said he got caught up in a scene, so I don't think he'll be here tonight, but we can certainly, you know, work with him to kind of clarify some of these things. And something that, you know, we looked at this, some of the regulations that we looked at actually did require fire department approval. Now, the fire department typically, when it comes to subdivision lots especially, they look at everything anyway, so that's not terribly unusual. But the, I think the biggest change here that we were looking at is the measurements from where, especially if you're looking at a subdivision lot, instead of measuring just to the pole, the closest part at the road, rather than do it that way, we measure, we would start measuring to the flag portion of the lot in the back, not the pole itself. So that is a pretty, that's a different change, or that's different from what we currently do.
I just feel like we should have the same, we should not have a different standard than we do already for other things, as far as fire sprinkler requirements, and that's, it kind of looks like that's where that, this is not jiving with what we're already doing, and it's really confusing. Does our adopted fire code spell out with surface type and load rating of, for roads? It says, in number one, it says, compliance with all adopted fire codes, including emergency vehicle access requirements, with surface type and load rating prior to final plat approval. I mean, do we already have that?
I believe it's in the code, and I'm not going to speak any further to it than that just because that's definitely my area of expertise. I'd like to have Josh be able to comment a little bit more on that, and unfortunately, like I said, he wasn't able to be here tonight.
That, kind of be interested to know what that is, because if you ask them one home to build a, essentially, the equivalent of a paved road that...
And some of these may be, right, and some of these may be something we look at more on the private easement side of things as opposed to flag lots. If you just have one person with a flag lot in a driveway, again, I don't want to speak for Josh, but my understanding has always been that wasn't as much of a concern for him as it was if it's multiple houses that it's being, that the drive is accessing. But again, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Yeah, I've just never heard of a fire code for a single home that, as far as driveways, essentially.
If you think the last meeting we had, I brought up that I've never seen a driveway put in according to our specs. Remember that, Mike? We had eight inches of base. I really don't think we want to go down that road if we want to look at the specs, because I've never seen us follow those specs. You remember me making that comment? I've never seen a drive put in according to specs. There's not a builder one, and me included, that would want to put down an eight-inch base, so that might need to be visited itself, so. At any rate, personally, for me, you know, I'm trying to be kind here, because on that flag lot, on that example, in this, we've had some folks to come up here and talk about, I bought this nice flag lot, now I want to redevelop it. I have found out I can get four more sites or five more sites back here on this flag. The day of the sale, I bought me what I thought was an estate lot, and now I've got a subdivision going up, going up next to me. That's an issue in itself. And I'm just struggling here tonight that we are quite ready to do anything. We've still got more questions than we've got answers. I got a call from Carl Montgomery this morning, the one that wrote the letter, and I also spoke with John Higgins, which they do a lot of the surveying out of these lots, and this is where it starts at. Builders have nothing to do with that piece of it on these farms with these flag lots. You show up and, who'll give me 10? You know, we'll start at 10 and work our way up, and then whoever buys a lot, they're going to try to maximize it if they can, if they don't care about their neighbor. Then you get the situation where you're in, you want to add a family member, and then four more family members or whatever. And as we grow in culture in this county, different culture... And as we grow in culture in this county, different culture. And I can show you some overhead shots if you want to take the time, look at them inside this county where it don't look nothing like America that I grew up in. And if we don't do something in terms of codes and spelling it out, it'll be something that none of us are expecting to see back in behind these woods or in, inside these flag lots. I think what we're trying to do in good faith is come up with something that works that three neighbors don't have six houses sitting in on a flag lot, and put some restrictions that we all can live with. The roads is one of them. Jim, I agree with you. I, I think that there is some standards that we're supposed to be going by, that we're not going by. I don't think we need to go by. Be quite honest with you, as deep as there's calling for base to go in, so Mike has something I think we need to look at. But I really don't think we're quite where we're at. I think that the realtors needed to have been included. I am amazed that we have a, an association for our county and for all you guys that serving on the planning, serving on the county commission. You guys are going to be tasked here this week with either accepting or rejecting an amendment coming out of our house, where me as a taxpayer wasn't asked for any input on that. But it's requiring us to grow 20% if we're going to get the tax incentive of 50 cents a foot. The association comes in here and speaks up. The general public for this county had zero say about this. They're asking to be invited and help us legislate, and they should. And as commissioners, y'all going to get a chance to be dealing with the same thing, where as a taxpaying citizen, there was zero input. Think about that this week. But we are not ready to take action on this, I, I can assure you.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to, we need, we need some sort of guidelines and insight on these flag lights, because, you know, it seems like everything that we do and we think we've got it covered, somebody comes up with a way around it and makes it even tougher on us. And I would like to see something comprehensive. I do want it to be very well thought out, though, and it sounds like there may still be a, a few questions that need fine tuning on it. We've, we've, we've come a long way, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions and, and possible guidance that the public needs. Most of the developers and certainly the builders don't mind well-thought-out regulations as long as they know that they can count on those, because I, obviously, they want, they want to see that the county look right, because it's good for their business. I never once thought about auctioneers, because those are the ones that are splitting up the property, basically. And they, they should, probably should be a part of this, and they can provide some guidance, and they're engineers also, and maybe they need an invitation to this thing.
Yeah, I agree with you. The other piece of that is the citizen that's out there that owns 300 acres. I think it's a good point, when we could be devaluing their property as well. But if you buy these big lots, the farmers got the benefit of the better price in sale because they can develop it. Put too many restrictions in there for selling land, raw land, without the ability to probably cut their value in a fifth, I would, I'd suggest. But we've got a lot more players in this that we need to be considering, I think.
And I will, at least, I, I agree with what everybody's saying, first of all, but I did hear from one of the engineering firms that actually liked what we were proposing as far as the regulations were concerned. So I just want to make sure that everybody, I'm not saying we don't have some things that need to be addressed here, or some clarifications need to be made and whatnot. But, you know, we didn't leave them out of the process, just so everybody knows.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I, I do want to, we have looked at this. This has been a problem for many years. We've had more than two work sessions recently, you know, just in the past few months. And this is, but we've talked about it for years. So there has been, and if you look at the examples over the county, I, I question the, I question that the auctioneers, the developers are, whether they're in town or out of town, we have a lot of out of town people coming in, and they don't care what it looks like. That's what we need to regulate. There are multiple examples across the county where you've had problems with roads, you've had problems with property rights and, and property right confusion. And that's what we're trying to address, and that we have talked about in these work sessions. So I, it, this has not been done lightly.
This has been a continuous discussion, I think, at a lot of our planning commission meetings, like what you're looking there coming off of Last Castis Road, where you see all those flag lights coming down side by side to all those different lots. And I remember when we got into this one and seeing all those flag lots, or the flag poles coming down there, you see all the different lots coming down through there. The discussion was, say, well, why don't they just build a road down through there for all the lots, instead of everybody having one little individual? And this is what we get into all the time. And, and this is what we've seen out there. Everybody does not, when you talk about codes, in this situation right here, everybody just does not do it the same. And that's why this has come up. We're, we're caught here between the rock and the hard place of trying to decide how to fix it. And that's why this has come this direction in what we're going here. I now out there, that I drive by almost every day on the road out there that has just gotten through with an auction that had several flag lots in it. Well, after the auction, it wasn't that everybody was driving, buying that dream country site out there to build their dream home. Some people bought it to resale. And now they've got all the resale signs out there. And when they got ready to put in their lanes, you know what they did for the entrance? They didn't have a single pipe put in that ditch, just a pile of rocks going into the drive. Now, there's all different piles of rocks along there, and not a covert in any of them down through there. We haven't had the winter rain yet. That means every ditch in there is going to fill up with water, and it's going to flood that road somewhere down through there. If somebody don't buy that piece of property and put in the right culverts and put in the right gravels. I knew what they were doing when I come by and saw what it was. They're important things, I got my own timer. But, but what they were doing, what they were doing is they were just trying to get an entrance till they could sell the lots. Well, this is what we run into, and this is some of the problems that we're having. So I totally get it, I know what you're talking about there, and we can easily, you know, have more studies and going and do this. But what we could possibly do is do something similar to what we have right here, have the study session in here, do it like we're doing right now, and everybody has their say. And if you see something we're needing to do, what we need to change, we bring it up, and then you come back and tell us, no, that won't work, or something of that type. But maybe we do need to bring it back and look at it in a different way, whatever is. But this is your decision, commissioners, where we go from here. This was brought to you tonight, and, and we can either vote on it and then work with it as we go along, or what? Because we've done this before, where we build it as we go. A lot of this is just like your construction. Sometimes you start with a foundation, and then you try to build from that direction. So it's up, it's up to the commission here.
And I will say that at our next planning commission meeting, our daytime meeting in a couple of weeks, we have a pretty light agenda, relatively speaking. We can just add this on as a staff report for further discussion, rather than have a separate work session. That would be pretty, pretty straightforward to do.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, do we include the realtors in this? I mean, I hadn't seen a one of them at any of our planning sessions, come to think of it today when this come up, because...
Whenever we have a, you talking about the study, the study session?
Right.
It's totally open to anybody that wishes to be there.
Do you notify them by email, or do you notify them by hard mail so they'll know?
Via the agenda, that we are going to be, what we're going to be working on. And we usually announce it here, that we're having a study session, and we're going to be discussing whatever. And that's how we do it. But no, we have not, as far as I know, I don't think we've sent out a...
We have not. I, I mean, the fact that we're having this discussion now, like I said, if you wanted to put it on as a staff report, we can just make that announcement. Now that that's what we're going to do, there's several people here that I'm sure have contacts that can get the word out. I can even get with, you know, Carl Montgomery, who sent me an email, just to let him know, hey, just FYI, during our next meeting, we're going to discuss this under staff reports. Feel free to come by. I'd be happy to do that.
See, I, looking at this, I see it a couple of different ways. I hear Jim on the builder's side. I, I got news, the builders are already used to working at about 20 different ways, if they work in 20 different jurisdictions. They hear mechanical contractors say, well, I can't do that in Franklin, but I can do it here, but I can't do it in Rutherford County, but I can do it in the city of Murfreesboro. All, all of that's, is, is really a way they have to do business. We all had to adapt to that piece. But now as far, yeah, just like that sheet shows.
All you have right here before you...
So from the vantage point of flag lots, I think it all starts with that fact that it becomes a flag lot. We've left out one of the most key ingredients in this whole process. They can tell us some things that none of us even know about right now, things that they've done for the homeowners or the state owners of that property. And we could make a suggestion and be totally off base, because we're not even aware of things that they see, whether it's what creeks, ponds, whatever they run, run into. But from these flag lots, I really do think that the survey group through the realtors can dictate the, how many flag lots they can get on a piece of property. But we will have to, and we're not going to make everybody happy. It's going to become a point where you're going to say, road's going to be X feet wide, it's going to be X feet deep, or X inches deep, hopefully, minimum of inches, because it's all related to cost. But I think we've got to get the right people in. I, I do not see that this is a situation that we can let a group, one group dictate what we're going to do here. I think, I think it's good to get the input from home builders, but it's bigger than home builders.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Doug. The, this example on the monitor with seven lots on, with all flag lots and with one road, you know, this shouldn't happen. They can, they can do more lots if they build a proper road, correct?
That's correct.
So the, the key here is for this not to happen, you know, on a substandard driveway, gravel driveway, you have seven houses. They can have more houses, but they're just going to have to build a road to sustain, or, or that a fire truck can get by to those houses.
And I, I think it was mentioned about the emergency services in here. It hasn't been long since we approved the codes. And some of this is coming from those fire codes that we have already approved. So some of that is in our, in our regulations, and I'm sure that's where that's being pulled from. But we can look at those, we can have the fire marshal here. He just happened to have a call that he's, he's out on tonight. But that's where some of that does come from. Well, I'm waiting on y'all.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, you know, I agree with the whole concept, and we all recognize that that's very poor planning, and that's what we're trying to get around with. And I, and I think almost all of this is on target. I'm a little bit concerned about, is this the draft that we're going to make a, a law? Obviously, there's some revisions that need to it and some exact wording before we say, yeah, this is what we want the commission to vote on, but not going to be word for word, I'm sure. There's a few things in there, a few little topics that I think are just minor tweaking, but that are very important, that haven't been fully considered. And I just don't know that tonight is the night for it yet. I think these, the, these individual details need to be worked out before it's made law. I think the, I have pretty good confidence that the county commission is likely going to approve whatever we send to them. So let's, let's send something that's correct and not, not conflicting with other regulations, and that it's well thought out, and we don't have to do this again. Dependable, yeah. Oh, defendable, yeah.
Mr. Vogel?
I just wanted to see if Doug or Mike, whoever's controlling the monitor, could slide over to the east just a little bit. And I, and I'd agree, we can, we need to discuss this some more and get it right, but not too far to the east, because I kind of wanted both, both images in there. And I'm not sure if people on TV can see it or not, but I just wanted to show, there's an example right there, close to it, of a, what I consider a properly planned subdivision right there. It's 12 lots versus the seven or eight lots that's flag poles. And it's just poor planning. It doesn't provide resources. It doesn't support longevity. And, and that's what we're trying to prevent from happening. It's, it's trying to institute, regulations are hard to write. I write it for the department all the time, and it's very difficult to cover every avenue. There's always a loophole, there's always a way around certain things. But we can get most of it right, and that's what we need to do here, and that's all we're trying to do. So I, I'm, I welcome more discussion, I welcome input from others, but we've got to get this right.
Well, does someone want to defer this after another study session?
I, I got one more question before we do defer this. I think Speaker Jensen did bring up a good point, as if there was innuendos, that there was going to be some other information discussed tonight. Do we have something else we need to lay out so we can all be considering? Because I think he brings up a good point. If there's more that we need to be talking about that's not on here, can we talk about what that looks like?
I mean, what you're seeing here tonight is what we, is what we intended to present. So we didn't have anything beyond that, Mr. ...
Okay.
And in the interest of getting it right, I'll make a motion to defer for a further discussion.
Have a motion, have a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Okay, it's being deferred, and to further discussion. Staff reports, other business?
I don't have anything further. Mike, do you have anything? No, we're good.
If not, charge earned.